Hey there, TheJapanCode here. Before I start the video, I just want to explain a little bit what I will be doing. So, the title says something along the lines of[19.12][19.32]"Japanese Anki Study Session" So, if you don't know what Anki is, this is probably a little bit confusing. Anki is the computer software that you are currently looking at. It is a SRS software, which is a spaced repetition system. Pretty much, well, when you're learning anything, to remember it, you have to keep reviewing. So this is a software used for reviewing. It's kind of like doing flashcards except without the hassle of doing it in real life, of doing real paper flashcards. Anyways, the point is, this system uses an algorithm to figure out when the next time is that you should review a certain card. For example, a card that you know very well will get shown less often and a card that you have more difficulty with will appear more often. That way you spend more time reviewing what is difficult for you than what is really easy. So in this video, all it will be is that you will... So in this video, I will not be teaching you how to use Anki and I will also not be teaching you some Japanese. That is not the point. It is just going to be me studying the same way I would normally. So if there's something that I understand automatically and I don't need to translate it in English, then I won't. Because I'm not trying to tell you what the things mean. I'm just, it's just me studying and if I was to translate stuff in English that I don't need to translate, then uh, it would just be... I'm looking for a word here. It would just, um, not proven but well, pretty much it wouldn't really help me studying at all. It would just enforce a bad habit. Of course, that means there will probably be some things that I will have to translate in English because I will need to do it to understand the sentence. But even for those, uh, what I say may not make a whole lot of sense. Because once again, the point is you, well, it's pretty much going to be as if you were sitting by me while I study. I'm not trying to teach you, you're just gonna see how I study. So hopefully you will enjoy this and if, if you enjoy it, then maybe I will make more of them. It's a good way to do my reviewing without getting bored of doing it. Because right now, uh, well, I have more than usually because I don't do a lot of new cards every day but uh, in the past I've had reviews pile up to over 100 a day. So that, that does take quite, quite some time. But anyways, I think I have explained all that I had to explain so I guess I will start now. Alright. It is time to do my Japanese reviews. I guess today I have 39 cards to review and then I will also have my 10 new cards, my 10 daily new cards, like always. So let's get started now. Got it? I think, yeah, this is... No, I don't particularly like Japanese music. Yeah, that's what it says, right? I'm jealous, I also want to go. Uh, yeah, I had trouble saying that last part but it will come with time, with time. I think this is like over there. Him, it's like over there's the person that's over there, over there's person, kind of. This is a student. Yeah, yeah, that's pretty much what it means. I thought that translated literally it doesn't make any kind of sense but that doesn't matter. No, is it "sabishi"? I think it is. Yeah, it is "sabishi" good night, okay. You didn't return home. You didn't return home, return home. Last, well, you didn't return home. Wasn't your mom lonely or something like that? What happened? Yeah, you may speak by means of English so pretty much what a teacher would say maybe. Will there be the book that you want to buy in Japan? The book you want to, yeah, that's what I thought. I have many friends and I like them all and I like everyone. Is what I should have said but that's really what I meant. Study more, be better. Not exactly but you know, something along those lines. I study more, I will study more and I will become better. Yes, or I'll become more skilled. It's not exactly that but that's what it means really, I assume. Well, no, I'm pretty sure of it. I, yeah, that's, well, yeah, I will listen to music until 3:00 at home. Alright. Alright, weren't there at the store? Where were you? Where? You weren't there at the store, where were you? What? Are you, yeah, it's just wasn't there at the store. Where? Where? Oh, okay. You weren't there at the store, where did you go? Okay, yeah, yeah, that makes sense. Yep, okay. I know my time box is done but I'm, I'm trying to make a video right now so you know. Continue. I want to watch a movie together with him. Is that, I want to see, yeah. Okay. I don't have money so I will not see a movie. Oh, that's past. I didn't have money so I didn't see a movie. Well, that was wrong, I got the time wrong. I have the time, the tense wrong, so. Had to put it hard. Uh, oh, damn it, this one. It's not "sukoshi", "sukoshi" I think, maybe. Because I have little time, he will wait, wait what? Because there is little time, he will wait. Okay, so I was right with the "sukoshi". So there really is a little time because he wait. Oh, no, no. Because, it's more like because I, but imply because I have a little time. I will wait for him. Is that, I don't think it's "he will wait", it's "will wait for him". So I'm gonna go with hard. Today there is a lot of schools homework. There, yeah, there is, okay. This movie is very good. We watch, shall we see, yep, that was good. What, is it what kind of movie do you think is better? Yeah, yeah, that's what it is. That store's person. I like, I like a little bit that store's person. Yeah, the person from that store would be in English but that's not. I'm just trying to translate literally right now. Well, like always. No. Slower, I, I don't have to rush this. Friend said the weather would be good, well, uh, was, was good. Well, he said the weather, well, the weather will be good or is good, I guess. Yeah. I think everyone will eat at about 1 o'clock. It's kind of what it says, yeah. Yeah, that, that's what it says. I plan on eating apples or fish. Yeah. Okay, let me take a sip of my green tea. Straight from Japan. Anyways, back to studying. The book you are, is the book you are reading at school easy? It's something along those lines. Wait, I'm gonna go look. How many is left? Oh, so there's still 15 left and then the 10 you. Let's see. Okay, also didn't play tennis yesterday, yeah, that's good. Well, didn't do but you know, didn't play tennis. I... I think this is asking, um, "katai ga..." No, not "katai", what am I saying? "Katai", yeah. Uh, I didn't say "ka", 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 what? Didn't say "ai". Oh, it's obvious, asking "ai". Didn't, did I say "school"? Something along those lines. Not totally sure but it depends on the context but there is no context here. So, yeah, I got that right. Without context, that's one of the possible answers really. At the end, as I thought, as expected. I didn't really go, I really didn't go, something like that. So I didn't go to school, I believe. Or you know, as expected, I didn't go to school or something like that. "Tousuru no?", "what are you gonna do?" Where do you intend to go tomorrow? Yeah, intend to, okay. How long have you or how long have I liked something or someone, depending on the con- context? Or how much, no, it's not "how long", that doesn't make, that wouldn't make sense, "how long". That was an obvious one, it's just a mistake. Because you don't know, please ask him. Well, because don't know. Maybe it would be "I don't know", it could be "you don't know" or something. Once again, depends on the context. I think this is like, I played tennis at school and then I returned to home. Okay, yeah. This month, I did not study at all. Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, because it is becoming late, I will not wait. Or because it will become late, yeah. I hesitated a little bit so I'm gonna go with hard. Yesterday, he went to s- Oh, yesterday I went to his house, okay. There we go. Because I didn't have money, I did not see a movie or the movie or whichever. Oh, 15, okay, I think, yeah, this is a new card because I have no idea what the first word is. Have you talked with your friend recently? Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. "Otondo" is "almost", "mostly". What's that mean? I didn't have any money so I... What? I didn't almost eat recently, what? Okay, oh, oh. I didn't have any money recently so I didn't really, so I I almost didn't eat, there we go. I may be wrong with that one but I think that's what it means. Uh, my eyes are painful because I have been playing video games. Alright. Energy vitality. It is of, often translated as the English "how are you?" but really it's only said when you haven't seen someone in a while or when you know they've been sick. So, every day he has told me "genki desuka", so every day he's asked me "how are you?", I guess. Asked me if I had energy and vitality. I study every day. Uh, "soshitei", I think "soshitei", "soshitei" is like, "and then" "setai", or, oh, and then I will absolutely become a doctor. It's eat too much, okay. So that is, uh, when you eat your meal at night. Because, oh, okay, because you eat because you, uh, because you eat too much meal or food, I guess, at night. It's kind of like when you eat too much food at night because of that. Uh, you've recently gained, because you eat too much food at night, you've recently gained weight, okay, yeah, that makes sense. There shouldn't be many cards left. Do too much, okay. That's pretty much means, don't you think I play? I think you play too much video games? As like questioning yourself or maybe someone is, or maybe I'm questioning myself through someone else or maybe I think you play too much video games. It depends on the context really. So there should be 3 cards left. Too cold, because today was too cold, uh, I did not go anywhere. This video game is too easy and boring. Too easy and boring, okay. So this is the last card. "Mataoka" is, should wait. This is a light sound, it goes closer to, it is better for you too. Mostly appears with the past tense casual form of a verb, uh, okay, so. He will, he will... But, okay, he is a little, okay, he is becoming a little late. He is a little late but he should, uh, but it is better for you to wait. But you, okay, it's pretty much like he's, he's a bit late but you should still wait for him or something like that. Oh, no, there's another one. Alright, that was a, a wrong card. How much do I like? There we go. So now you've seen what I do on a belly basis. Wait, on a belly basis, on a daily basis. I kind of mixed some letters there. Uh, but yeah, this is what I do on a daily basis as far as Japanese reviewing goes. Uh, the number of cards is gonna change of course but the general idea is tell the same. Uh, today was actually pretty good, I only did 2 mistakes and there's a few that I wasn't exactly searching but that will come with time. So I hope you enjoyed the video and if you enjoy this type of video, please let me know. If you enjoy it, I, I will probably make some more. Maybe I could even do them every X amount of time or something, I don't know. Kind of like the Catching Japan videos, which are recurring, recurring videos. Kind of like the Catching Japan videos, which are recurring recurring videos. But anyways, thank you for watching and I will see you next time. Bye.